Thank you. Could you be more specific about consistent with medical need? Is that it? Cancer patients, they're allowed to be specified.
Exactly. Should a caregiver need to be able to dispense more than two and a half ounces to these individuals to make sure that they have the appropriate amount of medicine or level of medicine to treat their conditions, the caregiver will be able to receive. Patient won't have to because we have the patient confidentiality. The caregiver will be able to receive that waiver from the department in order to serve that patient.
And is the waiver for unlimited or just double it? Or is it part of discretion of how much more than should they have?
It'll be consistent. It'll be consistent with the medical need. You may have some who need three ounces in a 15-day period. You may have folks who need five ounces in a 15-day period. It'll be consistent with medical needs.
Senator Haskell.
Medical need as determined by the qualifying physician.
And however, whatever form of medication they're prepared for.
I just wonder if it might be helpful in there to say, "Medical need as determined by the qualifying physician."
Well, may not be determined by the qualifying physician. It depends on what kind of form they're creating, they're using to dispense the medication. If you're using a tincture and a topical, I believe it takes a lot more. And we can, I'm looking at Catherine Lewis here in the audience because she has a cancer patient and she uses a lot more for. To make the Rick Sixon oil, it takes a lot, more than certainly 15 ounces.
I get what the issue is. I'm just trying to say, who's going to make that determination? A caregiver?
I believe the caregiver would have to justify that to the department for the waiver.
And so, would there be rules regarding that waiver? And if there are, then that makes sense to me.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional discussion on that particular piece? All right. CNN, Representative Bruce Lee.
Okay. And also, we added in to make it consistent with the caregiver's report in the waiver, I asked Mike to put the very same waiver language in where the dispensaries are to make that consistent. Under section 13, it's where we changed to enforce municipal code instead of to further the business. The next page, at the top, again, the same. Section 15 is where it became very tricky with the wanting primary caregivers who are not required to register at this time because they care for a family member. So, I added the language that they are required to register and pay fees except that. And we have these four exceptions now for reasons that accept that. Fees will be waived for a registered primary caregiver designated to cultivate for up to two qualifying patients if those patients are a member of the household with that primary caregiver. I took the language that was struck below and added that back with wait, fees waived. You can read through that. There's also a, the language under two that says they will be required to register with the Department of Health and Human Services by January 1, 2016. That may need to be in another section of law. I'm not sure. But because we were talking about that topic and pushing it out further, that's where I wanted that information for reference for the committee.
Yes, Representative Hammond.
Thank you. Deb, could you clarify, for somebody who's a caregiver for somebody in the same household currently, are they required to register?
Currently, they are not. However, some caregivers in the same household have developed an awful lot of cousins. And they must be a resident, obviously.
So, there's additional registration or requirement that's not currently imposed?
Yes, but the fees will be waived.
Fees waived.
Fees waived.
How much is that?
Right now, it's $240 per patient if you're a caregiver for somebody who is not a family member.
Excellent.
Yeah. This piece is also helpful for law enforcement. If you have somebody who files a complaint or makes a notification that they know somebody is growing marijuana, if they are now registered and law enforcement checks in with the department, department, or the metro check, they will automatically be able to see that they are a caregiver and they'll leave the law. You okay?
Can you come along?
All right. In page six, we added the language that was missing from the previous statute passed that says employees of a registered primary caregiver. In section 21, the department's amendment regarding child cards is added back into statute here. It was not in the bill. That was a separate amendment that the department brought forward. It was inadvertently repealed in the original bill language. On page seven, instead of the top paragraph, instead of acted in bad faith with respect to, we changed that to violated the law. In number, in section 24, five, a highlighted area, registry, identity card, patient cards expire, that language is to be repealed. That is no longer relevant to statute. Moving on to page nine, section 32, that language is a full repeal.
Yes, Representative Hammond.
Thank you. So, just for clarification, but they do expire when your active data issues. It's the information below at the top step?
Patients are no longer required to register. So, that talks about a patient registration card.
Okay.
You're welcome. So, section 32, that is to, that will be amended to read that section 32 is repealed.
What is section 32?
I guess I'm, it's just, it's not crossed out. It says, "Registered, such cards expire when you're activated initially."
Yes, Mike.
So, just to jump in, I think that Representative Sanderson struck that whole area there. And I, when I was sitting next to Mr. Albert, he had put the, a period in the middle of that sentence. And so, I think that there may have been some, I could be mistaken about that, but I believe that there was just a little bit extra stricken out. So, I just included that back in there, the portion that Mr. Albert had wanted to remain.
Correct.
Okay. So, that's why that looks that way. I just.
So, everything in the gray box is, has a strike down it?
Right. And then I just included the beginning of that first sentence again. And that, so that, the underlying portion should remain.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm a beginner drafter. It's not personal. So, section 32 is repealed. And we go on to section 33. Here's that third place where we put enforce municipal code instead of further the business of municipality. Under section 34, the revocation of a caregiver certification card. Section B is, will read, "A primary caregiver whose caregiver registration card has been revoked shall, in accordance with this chapter, dispose of all medical marijuana in any form with the addition of the language for designated qualifying patients." And then for clarity, I added C that says, "A primary caregiver whose caregiver registration card for qualifying patients has been revoked may continue to cultivate for themselves if they are a qualifying patient."
Oh, yes, Senator Haskell.
You can revoke yourself without registration.
Is that correct? Yes.
Then if you have, as a caregiver, then have that revoked. Have your registration card revoked. You still continue without a registration card. Do you need to say that?
We can correct the language that needs to be corrected. However, for the registered, for the qualifying patients, your registration cards, you get an individual card for each one, those will be revoked, however the intent is not to prohibit someone who is a qualifying patient from growing for themselves.
Okay.
And that may need to be clarified.
No, I understand. I was just wondering if we even needed, but probably did it to put it in twice then.
I put it in for clarity. Then, under section 36, 1A, the department shall promulgate routine technical rules consistent with the process for investigations to ensure compliance. Under three, you'll see the changes where must has been crossed out and may is in there. And then also, the language, "Each day of violation constitutes a separate offense. A person who at the time of violation of provisions of this chapter has been previously found to have violated the chapter commits a class D crime," that has been struck as well. And that is consistent in the three and four. In section five.
Yes, Representative Hammond.
So, we've heard a lot about those fines. Is that really comfortable with that, not the fine? Is that where we're landing on the fines? Where are we with that?
It's my understanding we're okay with the three and four fines. It's language in five and six where there's maybe a little remembrance.
I don't know. I'm just asking questions.
All right. So, we'll continue on if we want to come back to that weekend.
Under section five, penalties are fed to registers of primary caregiver. This is where there was a lot of thought and angst because of the requiring of a family member who has not been required to register until now for quite many years, 99, since 1999, I believe, when we first had the law, is now going to be required. So, the language has, at the end of the original language, I included, "Except that, A, a primary caregiver under section 15," and this goes back to the language under the primary caregivers, "will be exempt until January 1, 2016, and B, primary caregivers under section 15 after January 1, 2016 will be referred to the department to comply with this section." That's the crosswalk I thought was very important, to go back to, make sure that anything, remember who just didn't realize they were supposed to register, they had an opportunity to correct that. And then on the last page, burden of proof is struck on nine. And I added a name nine, compliance rules. And the department will promulgate technical rules to develop technical assistance and a clear process of corrective action plans for findings and violation of the main medical use of marijuana. That's where we are.
Discussion.
Can we, we do have this list of concerns that was committed by Hillary Lister about two particular areas. Would you like to discuss those areas?
I'm reading down through these. I believe a lot of the entries in here and the crosswalk back, the January 6th, the referring back to the department in order for someone who hasn't registered to have the opportunity to register. I believe most of those have been addressed in here. And I certainly understand the concerns. I believe that addresses.
So, I guess the one thing in here that I wonder about, and I'm just working my way through this, is so still an individual who is growing for themselves, isn't growing for a family member, isn't growing for a member of the household, is growing for themselves, is there really able to do? They would still not be required to register? Is that right? Are they required?
No.
Right, they're not required to register.
Are they going to be? Is that the intent? No.
Right. So, I guess I wonder, with the concern on, so like, I guess the concern expressed here, an argument for this change is that it would allow law enforcement to know who is illegally cultivating. Main law protect patient privacy, doesn't require a patient who's cultivating for only for personal use to register. This could result in law enforcement taking action against legal patients assuming you're cultivated illegally since their names don't show up on a registry. That's the argument made. Would you like to, I guess, any questions on that? I mean, I guess I do, I guess I do wonder about if we're concerned about someone, you have a neighbor saying, "Oh, my neighbor's from marijuana. I'm concerned they're doing illegally." And that's, I guess that's one of the reasons why we want to have people growing for family members to register, all be able to know who knows these. But are we, I guess, where that person is just growing for themselves, are we inadvertently making that situation worse by creating the expectation that everyone who's doing it illegally is going to be registered?
I don't think so. I think the situation here is that the department has tried to isolate itself entirely from the physician-patient relationship here. There's no regulatory framework around cultivating. Patients are allowed, qualified patients are allowed to cultivate for themselves. So, while the gap is covered by law enforcement in large part by requiring all caregivers to register, there's, remains a small gap around patients, but it's, that's a small issue.
Representative Bruce.
Yeah, I don't think it's creating problems.
Okay. So, this is, yeah, this is just the one concern real tight. How about Representative Bruce?
I just have a couple of questions, and it's totally in a different part of this. One was, under the summary in number 14 about the vets, that no slot, what?
Representative Sanderson.
I can answer that. That language is struck because there is, there's no longer any, it just doesn't apply anymore. It's, that summary's wrong.
The summary, that, and what was just passed out is wrong?
Yeah. And there used to be a sliding scale for veterans to register as patients. There is no patient registering anymore. That language no longer applies.
Okay. So, I've got a couple more questions, if it's okay.
Yes, Representative Bruce.
And then the next one, the name of the complainant who reports a violation of the act is confidential. So, if I'm growing, someone starts complaining, I can never find out who that person is?
From the department's perspective, all of our licensing programs allow that. Otherwise, it has significantly affected individuals' willingness to come forward to the government to complain. We receive literally thousands of complaints per year of various programs. We have complaint intake units that process the complaints and triage them, where we monitor them for the same person who's coming in. So, we have frequent flyers, we call them. So, we don't take action on those complaints. It is conceivable that somebody could complain about you and that we would inquire about that, but we don't have, how many findings? We move on.
I just want more. And my last one is, is there, I didn't see in here a course for, like, appeal or a process? So, would you just turn that where I might find it in here? Like, if I was, if the complaint was brought against me, I think it was totally frivolous, how would I go about that? I mean, I'm sure you must have some sort of step-by-step protocol for that.
It's not part of the law that we're amending, but the Maine Medical Marijuana Act complies with the, and there is, there are provisions in here, however, which do address that because we're trying to enhance the, the appeal process. But it conforms with the Maine, what's the state name? MAPA, Administrative Procedures Act, thank you, Maine Administrative Procedures Act. Those appeal rights are consistent with what you see in here and with what's available.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one question, back in section 15. So, I understand and appreciate where the department is seeing with the family piece. I guess I wonder, so I guess part of the reason we don't have the patient registry right is, is patient registry is because patients, I think understandably, have concerns with current federal status and how marijuana is treated on the federal level. They don't, you know, in a database somewhere. But I guess I wonder, if you have someone growing for a family, people in their household, and you're requiring the person who grows, who's growing for the household to register, are we, if the federal government were ever to take an interest, are we then creating a situation where the patients are kind of in that situation where they might not, they might not be registered, but their household is?
That same argument we made for the patients who cultivate for any kind of data in the state. So, the databases that we have, you're registered, we don't identify the database that you're registered to cultivate for, who it is. We just register to cultivate marijuana as a registered caregiver in the same name. So, if you extend that logic of your argument, that would apply to all caregivers in the state regardless of who you're cultivating for.
Well, I guess, I guess, I guess the thing is, if you're cultivating for someone in your household, then it's easy to figure out who's in the household. But if you're cultivating for people who aren't in your household, they have an active member of the million, and so people live in the state.
The government does not retain any information about who you're cultivating for. You just, you're cultivating for one, two, you get the card that authorizes you to cultivate for, each card appears to one person. So, there's no information about whether it's a family or whether it's a patient that lives two miles away.
Okay. All right, I'll stop there. But Representative Hammond.
Thank you. So, just to fill in my holes here, if, is there any circumstance where someone could be growing plants in their household that doesn't have a cap on it, where they could be cultivating many more than, you know, growing and having plants left over that they're, that they're selling? Is there any group that we've left out where they are left on their own and could potentially grow a lot?
No. There are caps on the amounts that can be grown for patients, caregivers, and for dispensaries, which are the only groups that are allowed to cultivate marijuana.
Patients growing for their families?
Patients must cultivate for themselves.
Okay. For other people, okay. I mean, that's the group I'm concerned about with conversions. I just want that answered. So, I have some very concerned people in my district, and I want to be able to go back to them and tell them that we plug those loopholes in.
I'm not saying that all people will be.
I understand.
But a patient can't cultivate for somebody else. If they're only, they're only authorized to cultivate for themselves. Caregivers must cultivate for only up to five patients. So, I think that what this does is it creates a situation where every individual who's cultivated, out of them who are all fine patients, must register to cultivate marijuana and so, without getting this patient wrong.
Okay. Thank you.
Representative Bruce, then Representative Hammond will be on deck.
I guess we're bouncing around a little bit with all these subjects, but my question is, is there any situation that there is a sliding scale fee for the fees? And I'm just thinking about someone who may be very poor, needing medical marijuana, but the caregiver still has to pay that certain fee. So, is there any sliding fee on anything?
Representative Sanderson.
For the patients who, for the individuals who are looking for a caregiver to cultivate, cultivate for them, and they are lower income, there are many caregivers in this state who are now providing that for no compensation to the patient. And under current law, they are able to do that if no compensation is accepted.
So, they, they don't have to pay that registration fee for that patient, is that correct? So that there's no, they can grow for free, but they, that caregiver doesn't have to pay that registration fee, is that correct? Okay. You think so?
So, I would just clarify one point there. Every caregiver must register and pay the fee, but it's up to them to decide how much they want to charge that patient for marijuana. If they don't charge at all, so you can be charging them for five patients, but you can have a sixth, a seventh, and an eighth patient, let's say, a qualifying patient that just can't afford it, and they're allowed to give that patient marijuana for nothing in exchange, for no money in exchange.
But they're still paying them. They're not paying.
Only the care, only the person who's growing.
The cultivator caregiver.
If the cultivator's patients, if they're five, full, five slots, they have to pay the fee for those five slots. However, if there is a sixth or seventh patient who cannot afford to pay, many of the caregivers are incredibly generous with these individuals and provide that medication to them for free. And they don't have to pay for that sixth or seventh because they're not, they're not necess, they're donating to someone who needs medication. Thank you.
Representative Hammond.
Thanks. So, and being in this state, you've got less than 24 consecutive hours. Who is going to monitor that, what circumstances? I mean, that's going to be a hotel room for a night, which is good for our local business. I'm not sure what we're looking for.
Yeah, that was a request in the department by law enforcement because there was no restriction on, particularly in the concern that came from your jurisdiction. And a lot of, but the larger.
The borders.
Right, the borders. And the, really, you know, it's going to be very challenging to enforce that. We're hoping that it's just in language that folks are aware of that, and if they get caught violating that, there will be ramifications to violating laws enforcement. It'd be challenging.
What would be the ramifications?
Depending on which state they get caught in. So, if they're caught in Massachusetts or New Hampshire, or they're, the ramifications would be at that end.
So, no, no, this is.
If they're a qualified, I mean, if they're a registered caregiver in this state and something occurs outside the state, yes, we could take actions to revoke their regular registration, but it would result, they would be violating this law, therefore, they would be offered outside the confines of the Maine Medical Marijuana Act, within the criminal realm.
So, they have to be caught outside of their own state.
Correct.
So, I understand. Thank you.
Representative Hammond, then Representative Sanderson on deck.
Thank you.
Thank you. So hypothetically, so say I was a caregiver, or somebody in my household, a family member in my household, it's a child, and I register as a caregiver. I do not pay a fee for that patient, is that correct? So when I register, there's no fee for that patient?
That's correct.
Okay. How does the department know that that person is a member, that member of the household is a family member, to pay that fee?
We would have to develop the proper forms for that, proper application forms for that. But the other piece of that, that I also want to clarify, is that if you're, if you're cultivating, the, you can be a caregiver for a patient and not have to register in the state, register with us. That doesn't change. So if I'm, I can be a caregiver for my grandfather, and I can go to the dispensary, or I can go to the, go to another caregiver, a non-cultivating caregiver, can get the marijuana transit, allow me to legally transport that marijuana to my grandfather for his use. Or it allows me to legally administer that marijuana to my child, that member of marijuana. Only if you're cultivating, caregiver, are we requiring that you would register in the state. So it's cultivated, it's cultivation. And there would be no, either way, there's no fee.
Sure. And I guess, how, how does the department develop, you said, the document?
Well, we have to develop, develop the application forms. We have to change the current application form to reflect that.
Okay. How do you see that being reflected on the form? Is it just a caregiver?
I haven't given that thought.
Okay. I guess I'm concerned about creating, adding people to the registry that aren't currently part of the registry, and I'm wondering what, what's the motivation to that, or what's the, what's the reason, what's, what's that view open to accomplish by adding them?
The biggest, the biggest thing that I see from a policy perspective, that aid law enforcement, so that if you, if you are a registered cultivator and you are, come into contact with law enforcement, and there's an inquiry about that, they can check that automatically. Secondarily, there's, just a policy perspective, that if you're cultivating marijuana in the state, regardless of your situation, you should be registered. You should have to register with the state for that privilege of cultivating under the Medical Marijuana Act.
Okay, so it's consistency between the people cultivating for a family member versus cultivating personally outside of the household.
Correct.
Okay. Do you see any issues with people cultivating personally in their family that might necessitate something?
Many, many. As Representative Sanderson said, the, the way that the current law is written, as an example, we have literally a frat house. They were all under the same, they were all living in the same house, they were cultivating for each other. We have very large extended families, very large extended families. So this tries to rein that in a little bit and tighten it. At least there's a requirement that you have to register, so you might be a little more thoughtful about being compliant with the laws and regulations around cultivation of marijuana under this Act.
Additional discussion? Is there any additional discussion we want to do on this bill at all? Or would we like to corner caucus? We're going to, uh, we'll corner caucus.
I was all done up so I was saying, I was like, I'm going to do it.